Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
Would you like to get Mr. DeVore up front here and lead us?
Yeah, Mr. DeVore, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions of the agenda?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to prove in minutes from the last public business meeting?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
At this point?
At this point, we want to move into the swearing in ceremony and to administer the oath of office. We have with us this evening, very grateful that she'd come with us, the clerk of the circuit court, Ms. Don Lindsay.
And as it starts, Commissioner, it's been a pleasure.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, and if we would like to have a round of applause.
I'm going to swear each of the commissioners in individually, but I have a commission here from the governor for all three, but I'm going to read that one time since it's all exactly the same. Each commission says, greetings. Be it known that the people of Allegheny County, reposing great trust and confidence in your integrity and wisdom, did on the sixth day of November 2018 elect you county commissioner. You are therefore to execute the said office justly, honestly, diligently, and faithfully according to law, and hold the same for a term of four years, beginning on March the 6th, 2018. You shall be duly discharged therefrom, given under the hand and the great seal of Maryland, Governor Larry Hogan. And I believe Mr. Caprari will swear you in first. If you would raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I do swear.
I do swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I'll be faithful.
And I'll be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And I'll support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Faithfully and diligently.
Faithfully and diligently.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality and prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Allegheny County Commissioner.
Allegheny County Commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here you go. Congratulations. And I believe Creed, your last. Please raise your right hand. I do swear that I'll support the Constitution.
I do swear I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I'll be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And that I'll be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of Allegheny County Commissioner.
Of Allegheny County Commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
There you go. Let's get you some time. Now, ready? Please raise your right hand. I do swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I do swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I'll be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of Allegheny County Commissioner.
Of Allegheny County Commissioner.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations, sir. And on cue, we have music. There you go.
Are we good?
We're good, gentlemen.
Sir, congratulations. We won't get a picture maybe with the three of us?
Yeah, let's get it.
Yeah. Jake?
She'll make you move.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, next on the agenda is the nomination and election of board president. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate. Commissioner Shade.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Creed, last chance.
I second it. And I'd have made the motion.
All right. Moving on, next up, we have our committee assignments for the next four years. Administrator Butler, do you want to read those off?
Sure. For Commissioner President Shade, the Cumberland-Allegheny County Industrial Foundation, the Board of Health, the Tri-County Council, and the Greater Cumberland Committee for Commissioner Brody, the Cumberland-Allegheny County Industrial Foundation, the Board of Health, the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Council, the Federal Correctional Institutional Board, the Human Resources Development Commission, the Potomac Highlands Airport Authority, and the Tri-County Council. And for Commissioner Caprari, the Cumberland-Allegheny County Industrial Foundation, the Board of Health, the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, the Western Maryland Consortium, the Social Services Board, Mental Health Advisory Board, and the Task Force on Child Abuse. Commissioners, as you all have agreed to it, there's no need for a motion here, but we just wanted to make those committee assignments known to the public.
Great.
Thank you.
Now, we'll have Commissioner's statements, comments, and if they want to make any introductions. Commissioner Caprari.
I wanted to thank my grandmother, Ann Donahoe, and grandfather, John Divico, for being here tonight. And again, a thank you to Commissioner Valentine for eight years of service to our counties. I appreciate that. Give them a round of applause. I also like to thank my mom and dad for all their help and support, and thank my biggest supporters, my wife, Missy, daughter Julia, and son, Michael, for all their love and support, and brother Joe for managing my campaign this year, and my treasurer, Ron Palai. I feel we are at a critical point in Allegheny County. Do we continue to push forward or fall behind? I say we push and push with everything that we have. No is not an answer. Failure is not an option. I do not feel that our goals are unrealistic or unattainable. With new vision and a new hope, we will press on to fulfill the promise and the destiny that has made Allegheny County great. I thank you for all your support and wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you for this evening.
Mr. Brody.
Absolutely. Thank everyone for showing up tonight. It's great to see such a packed house, and it really makes a person feel good that you have all this support here in Allegheny County. My mom and dad's with me here this evening. I want to thank them very much. You know, as a kid, one thing that I always remember, in 1971, we as kids was taken into the hospital room one night to see my dad, and said that he wouldn't live through the night. So for me to sit here and get sworn in for my third term is really special. So thank you. Thank everyone for showing up tonight. It's really important to us, and we'll try to do the best we can to keep Allegheny County moving in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Commissioners, I look forward to working with all of you. I'm really excited for this next term and being able to work together. We have all sorts of partners, elected officials from our senator all the way down to our new elected officials in Cumberland and Frosberg. I'm not going to name everyone out because we'll be here all night.
Okay, head.
No. You can if you want. But I do have some of my family here that I want to recognize because, as you all know, these campaigns are long and tiring, and sometimes they seem like they're never going to end. So to be here and be ready to get back to work, and I think we're going to hit the ground running. We have my little sister, Ella, is right there, fifth grade. Give away, Ella. Or not. We have my dad, my dad, Dave, stepmother Barbie, and then my grandparents, Martha Shade and Tim Malloy. Thank you all for everything. And it is humbling to sit here, and I think you almost appreciate it more the second time around, that, you know, it's what you've done in office and what you're going to continue to do, that that trust is really important. So thank you all for that, and I look forward to working with you. Well, with that, we're going to move into the business portion of our meeting. Item number one is Schroder Industries Business Expansion. Mr. Jeff Barkley.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number one is Schroder Industries Business Expansion. We're here tonight to celebrate a shining example of a business, and what a business should be in Allegheny County. This business first showed us a presence here in 1994, 24 years ago, and they inhabited two of the bays at our multi-tenant facility, so 24,000 square feet back then. They have expanded numerous times, right? In 2001, 2008, 2011, till today, they actually purchased the facility in 2013, so they occupy the entire 60,000 square feet. And now, we're here celebrating an additional 14,000, almost 14,000 square foot addition to this building because of additional work. The company now employs 77 people, so we're here, again, we're here to celebrate them, and they do have some things to share, Doug and Deb. This is Doug. He's, what's your role again?
Manufacturing engineer.
He's the manufacturing engineer. And Deb Denay, she's the plant manager out there. So if you'd like to say a few words, we certainly would appreciate it.
And Schroder wants to thank the county and the community for all the support that we've had, and we know that we can continue counting on that while we continue to grow. And Doug has a great presentation to share with you all.
Thanks.
Mr. Frank can provide some jokes.
Yes.
It's worth waiting.
Oh, there you go. Nice. Okay. Yeah. Okay, I got it. Yeah. So we broke ground the middle of this summer, and like Jeff was saying, this is about 13,000 square foot addition. And they started pouring concrete three in the morning so they could be finished midday because that's a lot better time to finish the grading. So this is a time lapse of some of the nicer days. I didn't want to put the camera out in the rain. So you've got, there you can see it took a little bit of jump, and there's where the crane showed up. They've got all the concrete poured, and they start putting up some of the structure once they get there. You can see the crane on the right-hand side, and they start putting the structure up once they get the crane leveled out and everything. So we had an interesting problem to deal with in that we were using an existing building which has a 14 to 18-foot roof height, and we wanted to go twice that high on our addition. Well, when you do that, you make a wall, and when you make that wall, you can have a considerable snowdrift. So what we did, we added a 20-foot section that's the same height of our existing building, and then the 70-foot section that's next to it is a 24 by 28. And then the 20-foot section that's the same height, we just reinforced the heck out of that roof line right there. That way, we didn't have to go into our existing warehouse, move everything, reinforce it, and then move all the material back in. So that's one of those. And then...
If all of you don't know, we're the industrial part of municipal crimes.
There's some nice pictures.
You recognize us.
Yeah. There's some nice pictures. Yeah, the elements are on the... Yeah. There's some more of the construction.
How many days is this?
This is probably three weeks' worth of pictures.
And how many pictures did you take?
Several thousand. Several thousand pictures, yeah. And I did not stand there and click the camera for each one.
I think we calculated, did we lose a total of three weeks total due to rain?
For rain, yeah.
Imagine that.
Yeah. Once they got up above the ground, they were really able to make progress, but it was a hump all to get there.
And I think one thing that we wanted to mention too was, after you get this thing all finished, and that you're going to occupy, you'd like to do some type of ribbon cutting. We plan, yes, we plan to do an open house celebration ribbon cutting. That would be fantastic, and sure we would love to have the commissioners attend such an event so that we can continue to celebrate.
Absolutely. Great. Our anticipated completion is end of January.
Wow, great. We'll just put our parkas on.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're indoors, too.
Yeah. It'll be heated and everything.
It will be connected to our current building with two different doorways.
Yeah. Okay. Congratulations.
Seems like just the other day, we sat here and talked to you in 2011 about expanding and taking over the rest of the building, moving the other tenants out, and then in 2013, when you took over, what a fantastic investment in Allegheny County. But to see this, it truly is a story from starting small to what it is today, so keep going.
One section left. We do have room for another 10,000 square feet on the other side. Yes, you do.
Absolutely.
We'll bring a shovel.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item number two is the Youth Apprenticeship Initiative, and that's being led by Mr. Brandon Butler, and Dr. Cox is here.
Commissioners, good evening. And I'm going to quickly turn things over to Ms. Candy Cannon, who is going to spend some time speaking to you about a great partnership that we have with Allegheny County Public Schools. You know, the narrative of some is that there's nothing going on in this county, but you have just shown us a shining example of Schroder Industries that is on the move. We have a number of companies that are also on the move and ready to partner with us, particularly as it relates to workforce development and providing opportunities for our youth. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to Ms. Cannon and to Dr. Cox.
Good evening, Commissioners, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled to be here this evening to see you sworn in. It was very nice. Brandon and I, along with Matt Shipway and Tanya Gomer, Dr. Kim Coball at the County Board of Education, and Dr. Cox have been working on this new initiative that we are very excited about for Allegheny County Public School students and for business and industry in Allegheny County. This is a potential opportunity. It was brought forth by Governor Larry Hogan. He established it with the passage of House Bill 942. It is a CTE program that will be offered to students, and our students to this program will have the ability to complete this program, which combines classroom instruction and a supervised, work-based training experience that is paid. That experience will allow them to have 450 hours of employment throughout their senior year of high school, and it will be paid by the employers. And we have several employers who have already signed on in support of this initiative. The employers must be on an approved list of participants. They have to go through a process with DLLR to be approved as an apprenticeship site. And our school system must identify a coordinator to act as the liaison to communicate with the DLLR staff, to lead our PAC, our Program Advisory Committee, which is required for all CTE programs, and to monitor the student progress. The student outcomes, which is what we're all about in Allegheny County Public Schools, what will this do for our students? Our students will be able to earn four high school credits, fulfilling a graduation requirement under that CTE pathway. There are various pathways to graduation. One of them is a CTE pathway, one is a foreign language pathway, and one of those pathways is a tech ed pathway. So this would be under the CTE pathway for students. Our students will be able to earn industry-recognized credentials, and they would be able to learn while they are earning a salary. The hope is that they are establishing a potential career path that can establish a pipeline for our students into the business and industry that is here in Allegheny County. Our students also, we are working with ACM. They have signed on in support of this initiative so that our students can earn potential articulated credits in a program at ACM to expand their educational opportunities in the post-secondary realm. So this has been a huge collaborative effort, and I have to give kudos to Brandon here because he got behind this initiative from the get-go. MSDE came to us and provided us with a technical assistance visit to kind of give us an overview, and they will provide continuing professional development throughout this program. Brandon actually set up that meeting here at the county offices for us, and we had that meeting here. DLLR will provide us with an apprenticeship navigator, and they will assist with the recruitment and registering of our employers. They will issue those skills certificates to our students at the conclusion of the program, and they will develop standard operating procedures for how the program will run. Our employers will work directly with DLLR and the program coordinator through Allegheny County Public Schools. They will interview and hire our youth apprentices, pay them that minimum wage salary is what we're shooting for, if not a little higher, and that is dependent upon the employer. They will define what competencies are required prior to entry into the position. They will assign a mentor to students, conduct performance evaluations, and provide safety instruction. The hope is, though it's not a requirement, that they will extend an offer of employment at the conclusion of the program. ACM, of course, will serve on our Program Advisory Committee, and they will assist with those articulated credit agreements. And if you're not quite sure what articulated credits mean, that is free college credits at the conclusion of courses or program. ACPS, of course, we have completed and are prepared to submit the grant application. I just received word today, late in the game, that another employer has jumped on board, Act First. Federal Credit Union has contacted us, saying that they wish to support this initiative as well, so we're including them into the grant application. We have to adopt the CTE program, identify our apprenticeship coordinator, work with MSDE staff, develop those policies that will guide the program regarding attendance for our students and their performance expectations. We have to create our Advisory Council to oversee the program and provide guidance, and naturally, we have to serve as the fiscal agent for the grant. Allegheny County Government, I will tell you, I am so appreciative of Brandon's efforts to assist us in getting this program headed in the right direction here for our students and Allegheny County. So I'm going to turn it over to him so that he can talk to you about the involvement.
Commissioners, this program would not happen if it had not been for strong employer involvement. And you have a graphic in front of you, and unfortunately, we'll make room for it with all the drinks there in front of us. But I do want to point out that this was no arm twisting, this was right away, employers were lining up, ready for this. Exclamation Labs, both the city and the county are making efforts to be eligible employers. Western Maryland Health System in Berry Groen and have been absolutely fantastic. Care Ventures, Allegheny Media, CBiz, and Weimer Automotive Group already are finding positions that will work. And as of this afternoon, one more has been added, Act First Federal Credit Union. So again, this is an absolute opportunity here to provide a pipeline of talent for our employers so that our students can not only be engaged in the community, but also, at the end of the day, stay in the community in a good-paying job. In the meantime, while as this program is getting off and running, under your leadership, Commissioners, we have Matt Shipway, our newly mentored Workforce Development Specialist, will be working very closely with Allegheny Public Schools to really marry, matchmake between the students and the employers so that they make the right fit. And of course, our new grant writer, Tanya Gomer, will also be there in support as well.
So the grant opportunity is open until December the 28th, but we have ours ready to roll. We are waiting on that one last letter right now from Act First, and as soon as I have that, we'll be able to upload it and submit it to the State Department. The funds requested within the grant have to fall within the categories that you can see here, and they pretty much... We've met with the State Department, we've met with county government, DLLR. We've had phone conferences with Washington County, who is also an apprenticeship Maryland site, as well as Frederick County. They were two of the first ones, I believe, Brandon, to jump in the game. Myself and Brandon have met on more than one occasion and via the phone. Our superintendent, chief academic officer, myself, the ACM Director of Workforce Development and County Government, we had an administrative meeting to kind of come up with the plan for funding the apprenticeship coordinator, which is where the Perkins idea kind of came forth. We finished our grant application. We've got our letters of support, with the exception of the one. And we've done our presentations to our curriculum committee, to the Board of Education, and we're here tonight presenting this to you to kind of showcase the plan. So with that said, if you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but we hope that you also see the value in the program and intend to give it your full support.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, moving to our public hearings. This is Code Home Rule Bill 6-18. This is a public hearing on the Braddock Run and Bedford Road sewer projects. Mr. Jason Bennett.
Good evening. Congratulations. As we introduced two weeks ago, the Code Home Rule Bill 6-18 is for $2.6 million. It's for Braddock Run and Bedford Road Water and Sewer Projects. These are projects that will be paid for by the users of each system, and they're both going to be FD loans that are 50/50 loan forgiveness. So we introduced this two weeks ago. Tonight would simply be the public hearing for a comment from either Commissioners or the public, and if there's no comment, then we can move for adoption at a future meeting, most likely next week.
Great. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the sewer system? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. All right. Moving to our action agenda, this is Enterprise Zone Recertification. Mr. Jeff Barkley.
Okay, Commissioners, we're here to ask for your approval of Resolution 18-37, which is Enterprise Zone Recertification. It's that time of year again that we recertify those companies that meet local standards for the Gateway Zone, the Route 220 South Zone, and the Frostburg Enterprise Zone. And also, as part of that, this further, the resolution further certifies that certain properties in those zones can qualify for real property tax credits as authorized by Tax Article 9-103 of the Annotated Code of Maryland. I'll say that as far as in the Gateway Zone, there are 20 companies in the Gateway Zone. Two of those are new certifications, Willbrook Holdings LLC and Elite Hospitality, Inc. Both of these companies are associated with the New Hampton Inn. And there is one company that's being recertified in the Route 220 Zone, which is America Woodmark. And Frostburg's list should be attached as well. And I'll say that Frostburg Mayor and Council took action November 15th to approve the companies on their list, and Cumberland approved its resolution on December 4th. So with that, we're looking for your approval.
Great. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion. We pass Resolution 18-37.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Item number five is the appointment of the county administrator as the county clerk. Mr. Rudd.
Somewhat self-explanatory. We used to have a position of county clerk, which was a full-time position that was eliminated several years ago, and the practice after that was to have the county administrator designated as clerk. It's essentially the secretary of the corporation. It's particularly relevant in this case because we do have some bond matters coming up, and we need a clerk, so I would ask that you designate Mr. Butler as the clerk for the county.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
For no additional consent.
All right. There you go. Make sure that's written down somewhere. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving to our consent agenda, Mr. Butler.
Thank you for that, Commissioners. So on the consent agenda, item number six is the Bedford Road Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation, Phase Six Request to Bid. Item number seven was the Board of Education of Allegheny County's Fiscal 2020 Capital Improvement Program. Item number eight is a, and nine are reappointments to various boards. Item number 10 is the 2018 salvage yard license issuances.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Rudd.
I have nothing to add.
Administrator Butler.
Nothing other than my congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Caprilli, anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing to add.
Commissioner?
Sir, no. Just thank you, Bill, for eight years. It's been fantastic. The sheriff's wife asked us if we could have the meeting wrapped up by 5:30. She wanted the podium for about 10 minutes, but I think we run over, so Serena will have to wait for another meeting.
There might be time. That's okay. All right. Again, thank you, Commissioner Valentine, Commissioner Brody, for serving over the last four years. I've enjoyed it. Commissioner Caprilli, look forward to serving with you, and I do think that the theme of the next four years is going to be working together. Mayor Morris, it's good to see you here. Mayor Flanagan, whole city council, thank you all for coming down tonight. It means a lot. Senator Edwards is here, Delegate Buckle, Delegate McKay. I think that's most of them, so. Julianne Albowitz is here with Senator Van Hollen, McColsky, Rummer Summerfield with Senator Cardin. Okay.
It's a full house.
And Mark Woodmire with the governor's office.
There you go.
I shouldn't have got into it, but it's okay. All right.
I think a brief background on all these people.
That's right. Date of birth, education. All right. Well, with that, you're welcome to come back to our next meeting. We will have another one next Thursday night at 5 o'clock, December 20th, in this room. With that, the meeting's adjourned.